You're all a little fuzzy.
All right. Roll call.
Here.
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 Here. Everybody's here. Y'all had a chance to go with the minutes from, I guess we did that. No, I guess we'd better approve the, I get, we did amend it.
You need to amend it.
I jumped too far. I was trying to get Jennifer started as quick as possible. Let's approve the motion to amend, I'm sorry. So we got Stan made a motion. We have a second on that?
I'll second definitely.
We got Keith, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'll start out with Jennifer and she's not fella well, so we're gonna let her go first and it's on her financial audit, so.
Okay.
Don't talk real loud.
I talk too loud. I'm like, I'm coughing with it, so I'm gonna just kinda be a little. Okay. We will start.
We'll manage. It'll be all right.
We'll start with the audit report in the audit book on page three. And this is our independent auditor's report where we are explaining that we have given the city of Ava as of June 30, 2019, an unqualified or clean opinion for the audit for the coherent, which means that we believe financial statements are fairly presented, so it's consistent with your prior years. And it's, I mean, you did a good job. We did not quantify it or qualify it for any reason, so that's a good job. The next section of the audit report is the management discussion analysis on page six. And this is Peggy's part that she does. And it is very detailed. It has a really good summary of all of the activity, of all of the funds, the debt, the capital assets, and the investments. And also has an economic factors section at the end on page 11 that talks about the economic factors and next year's budget. And so I'm not gonna go into detail on this part, but please feel free to go through that and read that. There's, there's a lot of work to go through and Peggy does a good job. The financial statements I'm gonna go over are your two income statements for your funds, for all of your funds. So we'll do the governmental funds first, and that's on page 16. Your governmental funds are your general fund and your park fund. The first section up above are your revenues. And revenue for the general fund has decreased. Last year it was about a little over 2 million. This year you're down to 1.2, but you also had a significant grant for your airport last year, and that was the majority of why that was so much higher last year, if you look at last year's compared to this year. The park fund was at 463,000 last year, and this year up to 470. So very consistent with your prior years on your park fund. Your expenses for your general fund went down compared to last year. A lot of that was in part because of the airport project. And so last year's expenses were 2.5 million in general fund, and this year you're down to 1.8. If you take out the airport project, you're still a little bit lower than where you were in 2018 as far as your expenses go. The only one that went up just a wee bit over the prior year was your maintenance department went up compared to last year. The, so towards the bottom, you can see that you've got a, where you've got your net income or loss, what they, we label it is, is excess deficit of revenues and other sources over expenditures and other uses. The general fund had a deficit of 373,000, and the park fund had a net income of 200, of 23,000. The general fund's deficit is, is in part because there wasn't a very large transfer out of the electric fund to help fund the general fund. We have a mental.
Shh. Sorry.
I have a, I have a comment about that that we'll discuss in, at the very end, but the, the general fund being so low, you are, you will be required to do a transfer out of your electric or your water sewer fund to help supplement general fund. Otherwise, you'll be belly up before the end of the year because you don't have the amount of revenue to cover the expense in general fund alone. You're not the only city who has to transfer money out of your enterprise funds to cover your general fund, so that's not unusual, but you'll just probably have to do it sooner this year than last year. Okay, so the next one I'll go over is on page 20. And these are your enterprise funds. So your water sewer, your electric, and your sanitation. Your revenue is at the top. Last year's revenue for water sewer was 1.4 million. This year you're at 1.5. Last year's electric revenue was at 6.4. This year you're down to 6.2. Prior year for sanitation was 430, and this year's 425, so you're very consistent with sanitation. Electric, there's some questions a little bit, but I was talking both the mayor and with Peggy, and they're gonna kinda look into some other avenues to see how efficient your electric fund is going and doing it with some of the resources that you have available to you without having to spend additional funds on that. So it's a step in the right direction to ask questions and to look into why the revenues decreased. So they already, they're already looking into it. The expenses are next, the next section down, your expenses for your water sewer. Last year, 1,031, this year you're 1,028, so you're very consistent. Electric was 6,777, this year you're 6,71. And then last year for sanitation, you are 398. This year you're at 408, so very consistent year to year. Each of the funds down at the very bottom, you actually, the net income for all of them, you had 180 for water sewer, 206,000 in electric, and 16,000 in sanitation. So the reason why your electric fund is increasing again is because of your, you didn't do the transfer to the general fund. And last year you didn't have an increase in your electric fund. And this year you did. Are there any questions? Okay. The next section over on page 23, these are the notes to the financial statements. And these are an in-depth view of everything that you will find in the financial statements. Things such as your capital assets and your restricted assets. So if you have restricted revenue or restricted cash, what is that made of and why? Your long-term debt, it explains on page 29, number six, your long-term debt. It shows how much you have left to pay out until you are finished paying on those items. You have your certificate of participation, your 2011s. You have your capital lease for your fire truck. And those are the two that you have. For your governmental activities. For your business activities, that starts on page seven. That shows what needs to be paid out on your revenue bonds.
Page what?
Page 30.
Page 30.
It's number seven.
It's the next page over. And then on page 31, there is a summary at the bottom that shows your beginning balance, and then how much was retired during the year, and then what's your ending balance, and what your amounts are due within the next year. Okay. The next. The next one that I will go over is page 50. This is your independent auditor's report over internal control, which is what we are required to do by doing a yellow hook audit for the city. We're giving the city an unmodified or clean opinion on your internal control. We do have to state that you have a material weakness, and that's on page 52. And the material weakness is segregation of duties. This is consistent with prior year and is consistent with the majority of our cities. They, GASBIE and GAAP basically want you to be able to separate out every single portion of the accounting process in order to have smooth checks and balances. And it's just not possible on a city this size. Majority of our cities cannot make this work, so the majority of them do have segregation of duties. We are required to bring it to your attention just so that you know that we are looking at it and we are asking questions of who signs off on bank statements, who gets the bank statements, who opens them, who reviews the reconciliations, who writes the checks, who mails the checks? How is your payroll handled? How do they receive it? How are they paid? Who approves the payroll before it gets to April and before it is calculated? So we look at all of those things during the audit, just to try and make sure that there's enough checks and balances there so that you are covered. Okay. Any questions? Okay. So you have two additional letters. We'll go over the one that has the numbers on it. It starts with number one, internal control. This is our, this is our management letter. These are our written communication, our written recommendations for the city. The first one is internal control. And with the changing and adding of employees, we want to recommend that your, the city review its internal control procedures to make sure that you've got enough safeguards over the city's assets and that you've got, we wanna make sure you're considering conducting reviews of cash management, computer information systems, mail distribution, purchasing, and vendor procedures. As far as if you have a new vendor, how is that approved? Can April, or not April, but can Jennifer go in and just create a vendor and then submit a check to that vendor without it ever being seen by anybody else? What are the policies and procedures in place to be able to add a vendor in the system and get them paid? The next one is new pronouncements. GASBIE, which is your governmental accounting standards board, has issued GASBIE statement number 87, and it will be effective for June 30, 2021. What this statement is, is in the past, all leases have had two sides. Either you were operating lease or you were a capital lease. Operating leases were like rentals. Capital lease, you were given a bargain purchase option, or you were planning on purchasing it at the end, or there was, there's three stipulations, I can't remember the other one, but there was a certain criteria for it to be a capital asset. Well, now those are gone, and all leases now have to be put together and, and are treated the same. In the past, capital leases were put on the books and operating leases were not put on the books. As far as books, I mean, your capital leases, like your fire truck lease, that was put on as a payable. And your copier leases, that was just a rent expense, so that went down in your income statement. It didn't go up on your balance sheet, and it wasn't shown as a lease payable. In 2021, all leases will have to be shown as a lease payable on your books, and they will have to be shown up there on the balance sheet. And so what we're trying to do is make sure all the cities, you know, the airport's gonna be a doozy. I'm just warning you now, that's gonna be kinda nasty, because you'll have leases back on, on both sides of the spectrum on airport. So you'll be the lessy and the lesser on some of those. So we're just trying to make sure that everyone is aware so that they start making a list of all of the leases that they come across, your copiers and your other smaller things. And then definitely, since you guys have an airport, you need to be looking at all of those leases, because those will all have to be recorded. And I can help you record those, yeah.
I appreciate it.
Make sure you're compliant. Number three is on the next page. This is a cybersecurity. We are, we put this management letter in all of our county audits for 2019, I mean, all of our governmental audits for 2019, and our nonprofits, actually. And what it is, is just that with the cybersecurity threats happening, all of the entities need to take added measures to make sure that everybody is aware of what to do with emails. Don't click on emails. Don't open any attachments. Don't share information, that sort of thing. We have had a lot of clients come up with viruses that hit, and it's all stemmed from an attachment. So it's, it's something that definitely needs to be talked about and discussed regularly by the staff. And then the fourth one, the city operations. There was a large decrease in the general fund balance of 373,000. And so what we have is that you've got, of your $84,000 balance that's in there right now, 61,000 of that is non-spendable, which means that the only unspent, unassigned fund balance of that is only just over $2,900. So that's just something to, because you did drop down so low that we needed to put that in writing, just to make sure that you guys understood and are looking at it. And, and we'll make sure that you try to figure out any way possible to kind of help general fund bring it up a little bit as far as your reserve. Our, our best guess is a reserve of expenses of anywhere from three to six months, and I know that's astronomically huge and not possible for a city this size, but it is possible to maybe try for half a month first, you know, for the first couple of years, try to get something in your reserve so that if something should happen with electric or with water sewer, that you guys would be okay. Because as of right now, if you didn't have electric or water sewer, general fund wouldn't be able to handle it. Okay. So then the other letter is our required communication with the board at the end of the audit. It's where we discuss if there were any difficulties during the audit. We didn't have any difficulties during the audit. We do put down the corrections and the adjustments, and that's under the next section, the accounts, receivable, payable, accrued expenses, pre-pays, the insurance, or the net pension liability, the pension activity, and the asset retirement obligation. All of those, the city operates on a cash basis budget, and then at the end of the year, between Peggy and between us, we get everybody back on track to be full accrual, which is where you guys are. So there are adjustments to get your payables and make sure all of those are on there and your receivables. And, and then obviously, the net pension activity was from, it's a doozy of a journal entry that is totally scary, and I won't even discuss it because it's ridiculous. So we'll just leave it at that. I'm wearing down.
Yeah.
There's, oh, this is pretty handsome management. Don't cry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Jennifer, do you want some more water?
It warmed up. I think that's it.
Yep. It's a long drilling process, and we're very appreciative to Jennifer and the staff for helping us dig and dig and dig and, and come through it, so.
Good. There's some very special ladies come down and come to the audit, and we really appreciate that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've got my audit just, and you'll be the lady elector.
Looked like I made you go home.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Well, it's nice the way she walks us through it. And they did do a good job, and the ladies here done a good job working with the, with the tools. Matter of fact, the audit was about a day shorter than what I think, about a day shorter than what they normally take. And that was just, the ladies worked well, and everybody cooperated, and just, it went really, really smooth.
Good. We are surprised.
Which was great.
Okay, been great.
Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting? Was there any, any changes or anything? So they're very accepted. I had presented them. No unfinished business. Peggy, did you have anything to?
Just that you had your financial reports in your packet. We ended December at 2,385,000, so we're still, about 100,000 under, I think what it was last month. We had a lot of bills go out. Lot of stuff.
We had a lot of stuff coming from us, didn't we?
We did, yeah. And so, and I'm sure we're gonna have some more. And I will, as you can see, general fund, as far as up here in the cash part of it isn't, it was starting to be negative at that point. And so I know, as I start finishing out in January, I'll probably have to be looking. I did budget transfers out of water and sewer for this year, but I've already done those. So we're gonna have to do something to, on how to make this work.
This is, this is not a surprise. We've already been talking about that, what, what we're gonna have to do, so.
Yeah.
Any questions for Peggy? Okay, we have a, we have an ordinance to pass tonight. 1060 ordinance.
Okay. We're going to, number 1060 is an ordinance for the mayor to execute and the city court to assess an agreement allowing Missouri Highways and Transportation, Transportation Commission Agency to select a consultant for the Bill Martin Memorial Airport runway lighting project.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve first reading of 1060.
We have a second. I'll second that. Is there any, does everybody remember what that's all about? Any, any discussion on that? It was just runway lights and stuff like that. Okay, all in favor? It's word aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll do the second reading tonight also.
Second reading is ordinance 1060, an ordinance for the mayor to execute and the city court to assess an agreement allowing Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Agency to select a consultant for the Bill Martin Memorial Airport runway lighting project.
A motion on the second reading.
I make a motion to approve second reading on ordinance 1060.
Keith made a motion, have a second?
I'll second the second.
Stan and all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any alderman comments tonight, or is it gonna just be all me? Go for it. Okay. It's just, first, on the first one there, I wanna mention that, I guess the last TAC meeting we had, I don't remember when it was, but anyway, we, we appointed or voted on Cody Dalton to take Johnny Merle's spot. Johnny retired, and Cody, I think, he's a, he's a real, real nice young guy. He'll do, I think he'll do a great job at ScoCog, so I think it was a, a good decision to.
Was home for him. Where's, where's?
Well, actually, I, I'm not sure where he lives at, but actually, he's a, he's a Dalton from over at, from Branch. That's why. He's, he's from that same family.
The Dalton.
Yeah, and we know the Dalton. Yes. Well, that's from the same family, so.
I see.
Real nice young guy, but I'm confident that he'll do a really good job at ScoCog, so I'm glad to have him over there. So Johnny was a good, done a really good job, and I, and I think Cody will do an excellent job also. That's just the information that I wanted to share with you. Again, on the CDBG grant on the square, I think, I think we talked about it the last time, I'm not sure. It's been so long since we've met. Andy Knowlger said that he thought that they could have the plans together and we could be ready for bids in mid-spring, and then hopefully start this project in, early summer is what we're hoping. And I did call him back last week, and I was concerned about, the turning been a little bit too tight on the square, because he, he wasn't aware of the fact that we have big trucks that are GPS through our square, you know, and they use 14 highway, East 14 quite a bit, and West 14, but he wasn't aware of the fact. And Carl Slate and I went down in Dunson measuring on the square, and according to the way the lines are laid out now, which are, they work good, for parking, we could gain according to the plans in here and what we've got now, I think we can gain an extra three feet on each side, and I'm calling them ball bouts. I'm not, I'm not sure what the proper name is. It's where they, a ball bout is what I wanna stay. I wanted, that's my story, and I wanna stick with it. But anyway, I think we can gain an extra three feet on each side, and I talked to Andy about that, and he said that he would try to, he would present it to MODOT, and he thought that they would be okay with it. And then I, I believe I might have mentioned it the last time, like, there's a drain on the northwest corner of the square, and that's the only one we got, and I recommended putting another one on the northeast corner, because it's the way the, the walkway and curving's gonna be, there, there's a potential to trap water, and he's gonna add that to the plan, so. But that's the only changes that he made and recommended that he made, that he would make. But hopefully that, that, we'll get that project going early summer, the actual construction part of it, early summer is what we're hoping, and get it, get it done. And I'm not sure that, I think, is it 2023 that we have to have the Ava Square ADA assessable? Is that, is that right?
I think they changed their date on that.
Did they change the date? But anyway, that's something that we, you know, we've got to do it. I don't, I didn't know they'd changed the date on it. But anyway, in the near future, it, it's gotta be ADA, ADA assessable, so. And this'll do it. This'll get it accomplished for it. Any questions on that?
I just had a question on gaining the extra three feet. Are we just tightening down the build outs? Is that what we're doing, making them smaller?
Smaller, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if we were going to bill away with them or just tighten them up.
Just tighten them up. I, the major, I measured the angle, you know, the, the, and that's kinda, I'll try to describe this, that the, the white lanes where you're parked, they're at an angle, and I measured perpendicular from the curb out to the outside edge of them, and it's 14 feet. And, and I noticed the cars, they're all parked inside of it, the bumpers were inside of it, so that works good. And so I went in here and just scaled it out on this plan, and it measures about 17 feet, measured perpendicular. So that'll, you know, you take six foot, and that's, that's quite a bit of room, and if we can gain that much, it'll, it'll help about the turning. And he said that they use a, a computer program to, to show that trucks can get around it, but if we can make it a little bigger, and I think that's what we need to do, so, because there is a lot of trucks that go around that square, big trucks.
Yeah.
Is there anything else? Our generator projects, you know, we had PD, City Hall wastewater treatment plant. They, they are putting pads in now, that, that, they're starting that, and we should have that, weather permitting, that project should be done by the end of this month is what I'm hoping, but weather will play a factor in that. But anyway, that.
They poured one at the PD today.
But anyway, that, it shouldn't take too long to, to get that project done, and I went out to the, I, some of the water department, and anyway, we went out to the, the generator we got out in Crosland addition, I guess is what they call it, but out of the well that we abandoned, and we took a. we abandoned and we took a, a battery out there and stuck it in that old generator that had been there since two thousand.
Car and meat.
That generator has been there since two thousand and eight. It had nineteen hours on it. And we put a battery in it and started it up and it, it sounded like a brand new one. I mean, it's.
Started that up?
It started right up. I mean, it started almost immediately. But anyway, we're gonna, we're gonna bring it to town and we've got a pad poured for it at, I'm pretty sure that that's number two, anyway, well, at the water department. But anyway, we've got a pad and we're gonna, we're gonna bring it to town and we're gonna utilize it because it's, that's a brand new piece of equipment just sitting out there and, but we're in the process, had a hundred and ninety-seven gallon, I believe, just shy of two hundred gallon of diesel fuel in it. We're gonna try to get that all pumped out and lighten it up as much as we can, but I think it was a hundred and ninety-seven gallon tank that's on the bottom, it's all self-contained. It's, the tank's on the bottom and the generator's on top, big diesel engine and, but anyway, that was good news for it to start up like it did and it run like a brand new one, so.
What brand, what brand?
It's, it's a Kohler.
Kohler?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's a good brand. You see a lot of Kohler and Caterpillar generators around, but anyway, that was, that was pleasing to, to get it running, so. And we'll, we'll bring it to town. And cardboard, of course, everybody knows that cardboard, the price of the bail, bail cardboard, but it just went to nothing. I mean, there was a pretty good, pretty good price. I mean, they could make money with it recycling. That was actually the only thing they really made money with was the bail cardboard. Well, recycling, they'll down at south of town, they quit taking cardboard, so we've got, we've got, I mean, at this point, we're putting more cardboard in the landfill, but I've, I've called Dawn at Doco and, and we're still talking about, you know, what we can do to, you know, get rid of part of the, you know, bail it up. They have a baler over there and we're trying to figure out, you know, can we work it out to where we can pick up cardboard city and haul it to them and, but anyway, that's, we are talking with each other, trying to, trying to figure out a way we can do that versus taking it all to the landfill, so. She said she would get back with me next week, so hopefully we can figure out a way to, to keep as much of it as we can out of the landfill, so that's, that's the plan anyway. And I think we mentioned at last, the last meeting that our phone system will, it should be, that's a, that's a work in progress and, but I think, and it sounds like in the next thirty days, that'll all be taken care of and Grinnan with Toshiba, that, Toshiba's not no longer gonna exist after a year, so we, we didn't have a choice. We had to switch phone companies or phone system. But anyway, we've got a, we've been working with CenturyLink and I think we've got it figured out and the next thirty days, we can have everything switched over and completed and yesterday, day before yesterday, we was talking to a young guy out of Arizona and I said, the main thing here, we want one person we can call, that we can get something done, not all over. And he said, I'm that one person. And I, and I asked him that a couple of times. You are the person. I said, I want one person. And he said, it's me, here's my number. So, anyhow, that, that'll save us a lot of time here at City Hall trying to, we call one person for all the problems. We don't call four or five different vendors trying to figure out whose fault it is, we don't have phone service. That is a problem I think we've got a handle on. And we've got some recommended appointments for the park board and I can find them. I've got them somewhere.
The three then?
The three, okay, we got Erin Williams, William Thorburn and Courtney Ayers. And anyway, I'd recommend every, you know, with a motion, we, we appoint them to the, to the park board. Have you got them? Yeah. Do we, do we have a?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve appointments.
The three new, renewed. Do we have a second on that?
Yeah, I second that.
Okay, Keith second. Any, any further discussion on the appointments? Recommendation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sir.
Aye.
Okay, all in favor? Next, we got the extension council, laborer, a couple of the ladies come in last week, I believe it was, and they wanted to know if we were gonna give them ten thousand dollars for, and that's what we've been doing in the past and, and we have budgeted that, but we let them know that that's, it's a board decision, so I guess, what are, what all you, what do you think about, you wanna continue making a ten thousand dollar contribution to the extension council and, but I, I talked to Peggy and it has been budgeted. Do we have a, a motion two or?
I guess the county is still doing ten thousand, is that?
Yes, sir, they are. And I think, don't they have to make, they have to do that?
Yeah.
The county has to do that.
Yeah, it's, it's.
I didn't know that.
It's a county.
It's a county thing.
Program.
Uh-huh. But I didn't know that they had to do it.
We're doing it, but we don't have to.
No, and how long have we been doing that? We started that when they had some financial trouble and we started helping them out.
Mm-hmm. This is, it's been going a long time.
Probably five, six years now.
Yeah, I would say at least, at least that.
They've, they've been, of course, again, that's not the question, but they have been very grateful and, and do know and say that they probably would not be able to continue their operations without the assistance.
But anyway, it's, it's up to the council, whatever, if you, you want to, just need a motion to continue or which way do you wanna, which way do you wanna prefer to go on that?
What is their deadline on making that decision? Or do we have one?
We really don't have one. January is just the beginning of their fiscal year and, and I know.
They're kind of wanting to.
They, they struggle to just say. They use them, you know, is, is the deal.
All right, do we need a motion? Yeah, yeah, if you wanna do it.
Continue for twenty twenty?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Stan make a motion. Do we have a second on that?
I will second.
Okay. Do we have any, any further discussion on that? Do we have a little?
What are the benefits that, that our citizens receive, that people in the city from the extension council? What, what are the benefits?
They have classes that, that are beneficial. I don't, I mean, I couldn't.
They have a variety of classes. I tend to just focus on what benefits me.
Right.
Outside of that. I do know they have other types of like home, home style gardening and, and master gardening classes and, and stuff like that that I'm sure is available to, for what all they actually do, we probably need to have them come down and, and maybe explain that a little further and, and maybe you wanna do that before we budget again for this next year. Maybe that's something to think about having them. They did mention to Burley that there is a seat on the council up there that they would like for somebody to, for the city to sit in and be on that board.
But that, that seat is open.
You know, they do a variety of things. They do soil tests, they put on the grazing schools and, and I think, you know, many times they can, when we have a specialist in there, I'm not sure how many hours or how many days a week we have a specialist, but a lot of times they can provide, you know, expert advice on, you know, a variety of subjects, whether it be in forestry or private forestry or, I like to say, gardening or, or land management, you know, you know, they do stuff like that. Used to be that was the only place you could go to get, before the days of the internet, to get the expert advice, but you know, you kinda have access to a lot of your information now online.
Their bulletins, you know, all the bulletins are online.
Yeah. I think, you know, at least from my personal experience, it's been, you know, these particular agencies provide the classes and training that you have to go to before you can then apply for any of their programs, just like you mentioned the grazing school. You have to go through all of that before you can then turn around and apply for the grants through soil and water and all these other things. And since Ava is the county seat, it's the only place in Douglas County that you can go for it. And the ten thousand is all I'm wanting to get is county.
I did sit through the, where the extension council is also helping train young mothers on how to cook healthier, doing more balanced nutrition.
Right, there's alcohol.
They're working out there with.
There's a whole mix in, in garden aspect, not just cattle, you know, classes.
Did, did you make a second on that? Yes, I did. Okay. If there's not any further discussion, the ones in, in favor, just?
Aye.
Aye.
Two?
I'll vote in favor.
Okay, three in favor?
I'll vote in favor.
Okay. Unanimous? Okay.
But this is something, you know, we'll do it next year.
Yeah. And I'll tell you what, part of this is my fault. I should have had her come here and she asked me, and she has integrity, she said, do I need to come? And I said, well, I don't think so, but anyway, so that's my fault and I, I'll know, I won't let that happen again and there's questions and we can, we can ask her, so.
Well, and I think we can be a little proactive and maybe that before we do budgets this next round, have her come, have her talk and then yents have a more clear idea as we go into, do we want to fit it in the budget or not? And then if it's in the budget, we know that we've already got a pretty good foundation for approving that. Just something to think about.
All right, I, about three o'clock in the morning, I, I remembered we passed a noise ordinance and I, and I thought, well, I haven't seen any signs and, but anyway, I heard a big truck going through the south end of town and Jake Brakes going just baling. But anyway, I thought, we ordered them, but we haven't put them up. Well, that was me. I should have called Michael Wake and, and got permission. I didn't know you had to go into a contract with the state to put a, a sign up. But anyway, the reason the signs were not up is because I didn't call. So, anyway, I have taken care of that and we will sign a contract with the state, which you have to, on all signs and, and no big deal. He said we'll probably put them up where the, the Purple Heart signs are at coming into town and, but anyway, we have them and we will be putting them up as soon as Michael gets back with me and, but anyway, the reason they weren't up is because of me. I'll take point for that. And I just, Peggy had done a little more work on, with Verbal on the AMI system and not enough to go into any detail, but anyway, she's still working on that for the meter readers and so. And then another thing that come up over the weekend, we had a clarifier, which is that wastewater treatment plant, that, the clarifier, the big concrete pitch with the agitator that goes in the bottom and it's about, oh, ten feet deep and, but anyway, it's got big paddles on the bottom and it sits there and spins. Well, they, they went over there Sunday morning and it wasn't spinning, so they put a new shear pin in it and turned it back on and it sheared it again and they ended up sharing about three shear pins on it and so. That happens, but typically it's because of ice buildup on the outer edges. Well, there was many ice on there Sunday morning, so that wasn't the problem. So, they started draining it and they drained it and put it over into one of the other clarifiers and, and they noticed the paddles were tilted, which is an indication there's a, there's a bearing out of it. Well, is it on the top or is it on the bottom? But anyway, they cleaned it out and they found out the bearing was out up on top and that bearing is on its way here and that's an eighteen hundred dollar bearing that goes in.
Of course it does.
So, anyway. I know that's a lot of money, but that's not as much as I anticipated and Tim from Smith and Edwards is gonna send somebody over here to put it in and Stephen and Friday, Russell Friday are gonna assist him putting it in and, and then hopefully that this happens again, they can put the, the bearing in themselves, but if not, it was, that clarifier has not cost us anything, cause when I pulled it over there and parked, I seen a plaque on the wall said nineteen eighty-nine, so.
Yeah.
This, this clarifier is thirty-one years old and.
It made major rotation, hasn't it?
Yes, it's made a major. So, anyway, that's, I'm not, I hate to spend eighteen hundred dollars on a bearing, but.
Still lasting, I guess, thirty seven years.
We can, if we can get that many more years out of the metal, then I'm not gonna worry about it too much, so. Anyway, we'll, we'll get that fixed. Anyway, we're, we're not hurting for anything like that. We've got the other clarifiers that we're using and, and we'll get that fixed and maybe this week or next week and be back online. I don't have anything else for, for helping as anybody.
Did I sweep through the power line and brush one more?
No, he missed it. Oh, that was just kinda, we did, yeah.
Would you say that? We're done.
Power lines, they're, the guys are working pretty hard on that right now. Of course, that ice storm, we had, of course, brought a lot more limbs down again and that's just, they pretty well got most of that taken care of and then they're working pretty hard. You know, that's this time of year when the limbs are off is when the brush crew, they get in and they're doing a really good job and they're cutting them back considerably this year, so. And I, I hope to continue doing that, so we can. But anyway, we didn't have too much trouble with, with limbs and ice, but with power out, it just, but anyway, we wanna, we wanna keep it that way. Yeah, Stan had a lot of damage over his place here not too long ago. I, I don't have anything else, you know, so do we have a motion to go in and close? We had a couple, a couple of things to talk about and close.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to go in and close session.
Make a motion, have a second?
Second.
Noel, all in favor?
Aye.